I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board Committee the whole meeting for October 29th, 2018, to order. Roll call, please.
Ballmas.
President.
Hood.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Sixth president.
All right. Have everyone's a count of four. This is a very special night for us. It's a very exciting night, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. This is a fantastic night. We are doing some promotions tonight from some very, very deserving employees. It's always wonderful to promote from within. So I'm going to be administering the oath of office for the promotion of Police Sergeant John Ward to the position of Police Commander. So, John? Want to meet me down front? And I have the microphone. Somebody has the oath. Ready for this?
I have this photo.
What is the honor for me? Where are you in?
I think we're safe.
All right. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, John Ward.
I, John Ward.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commander.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commander.
In the village of Gurnee.
In the village of Gurnee.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Aforesaid, do solemnly swear.
Aforesaid, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Commander according to the best of my ability.
Of Commander according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You are now our Commander.
This is my daughter Jessica. I chose her to put on my badge. She's also going to be a police officer, and she's testing right now, so I thought it would be appropriate. It's not taking as long as you think. Thanks. I have other families, family members here tonight, and a couple of friends. My son Jacob, my wife Bridgette, and my good friends Donna and Renee Metzlar. I've been a long time, I grew up in Gurnee. I've been in the area for 49 years. I've got a lot of pride in this town. I'm very excited for the opportunity, and I'm glad to work with all of you and for all of you. Thank you.
You earned it. You all deserve it. Thank you. All right. It's my great honor and the village's great honor to be promoting Tracy Puglisi to the position of Sergeant. Tracy? There you are, right in the front row. I can't miss you. This is a great night for us. All right. Raise your right hand. I, Tracy Puglisi.
I, Tracy Puglisi.
Having been appointed to the Office of Sergeant.
Having been appointed to Office of Sergeant.
In the village of Gurnee.
In the village of Gurnee.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Aforesaid, do solemnly swear.
Aforesaid, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Sergeant.
The duties of the Office of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Who has the honor of penning him?
He's a cutie.
Wow. Very important response.
This is my son Jacob. Can you say hi, buddy?
We're very proud of you, but I think you have other family members who are just as proud of you.
I would like to thank my family for coming. I have my in-laws here, my mom, my brother, my brother's girlfriend, obviously my husband over here. Thank you for everybody from the department that came out. I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited for this. Thank you.
It's great to see new leadership coming into place, and thank you Chief Woodside for grooming and mentoring our next generation of leaders. And we are looking forward to you in your new positions, you and John. So, thank you. All right. And thank you for all the staff that came too to support. All right. Now, we're going to move on to something that's just as important to the village. We're going to have a report from Brad Porter from Lauderbach and Amen. Our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2018. This is our CAFER, basically, which summarizes where we are financially, so we can pay for all these fine officers. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Porter. I'm with Lauderbach and Amen, the village's auditing firm. Again, I am here tonight to present to you the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2018. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to first and foremost be here tonight, and I'd also like to extend a big thank you to Brian and his staff for an excellent job well done this year. We certainly look forward to our field work every year coming out here. We're treated very well, and him and his staff do a great job. We really appreciate the relationship that we've built over the years. So, moving on, you should see a number of different documents in front of you, and I'm actually going to start with the one that is not in front of you, ironically, and that is the SAS 114 letter. I had given Brian a copy of that, so you can certainly review that at your leisure. But Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114 requires us to communicate any deficiencies or difficulties that we encountered over the course of our audit procedures. I am happy to report that there were no such difficulties or disagreements this year, and that is exactly what will be found in the context of that letter. So, again, Brian has a copy if you would like to review that. So, nextly, you should have a copy of the Agreed Upon Procedures Letter in relation to the village's intergovernmental agreement with the Warren Waukegan Fire Protection District. I'm not going to go into too much detail on this, but I would like to point out that we perform a number of procedures. We do not draw a formal opinion on this intergovernmental agreement. Oh, sorry. Oh. I'm sorry. But in regards to this agreed upon procedures engagement, I would just like to point out that we do not draw a formal opinion on this agreement, on these procedures. However, we do perform a number of different tests and procedures on that agreement, and we had no exceptions noted this year. So, there's nothing too significant to point out there. Now for the actual audit report, everybody's favorite. If I could, the comprehensive annual financial report is split into three different sections. You have your introductory section, your financial section, and your statistical section. I'm going to focus most of my efforts on the financial section tonight, but I will touch on the introductory section a little bit as well. If I could please have you turn to Roman numeral page 11. That is in the introductory section. I would certainly like to point out that the village has received the Certificate of Achievement Award again this year, which is great. This award is, there's a strict, very strict set of standards that must be complied with in terms of financial reporting, and it is certainly an accomplishment to receive this award. So, I'd like to point out that this award, you will see the April 30th, 2017 award presented here. April 30th, 2018 will be applied for, and we're in the process of that now. I expect and anticipate to see that in next year's audit report. So, again, certainly an accomplishment for the village. Moving on to the financial section, here you will find things such as our independent auditors' report, the management discussion and analysis, your basic financial statements, required supplementary information as part of the CAFER program, that Certificate of Achievement Award, and then your combining and individual fund financial statements. So, again, I'm not going to focus too much on the actual details tonight, but I would like to point out that on pages one through three, you will find our independent auditors' report. This independent auditors' report sets forth our responsibilities as the village auditors, and it also sets forth your responsibilities as the village management. On page two, you will find, most importantly, that we have issued an unmodified opinion for fiscal year 2018. An unmodified opinion is the cleanest form of opinion that you can receive in the governmental accounting world. So, again, kudos to all that were involved in the process. That's certainly, again, another accomplishment. And what this means is that the financial statements were free from material misstatement, and that there were sound internal controls surrounding the financial statements, which is, which is great. Moving on to the management discussion and analysis, you will flip a couple pages and see that the page numbers start to look like MDNA. Again, I'm not going to read through this entire MDNA tonight, as I think we might be here for a while, but I would highly, highly recommend reading through this at your own leisure, because it provides a great narrative summary of kind of what happened during the fiscal year. Sometimes these financial statements are not the most easily understandable, so this management discussion and analysis is a great place to look for, you know, a narrative summary of what happened during the year. Moving towards those fund financial statements, on pages three, four, and five, you will find your government-wide balance sheet. This government-wide balance sheet is split into governmental activities, which comprises your general, your special revenue, your debt service, and your capital projects fund. And then you will also find your business-type activities, which encompasses your golf course and your water and sewer funds. This is at the government-wide level, so it is a total of all those funds, and it is presented on a full accrual basis of accounting in the governmental accounting world. So, I'd like to point out on the bottom of page five, you will find your total net position number. This is certainly something that we use to gauge, you know, overall performance for the fiscal year. I'd like to point out that governmental activities had increased by one and a half percent this year, and your business-type activities had increased by 1.1 percent. Obviously, we like to see those numbers going up, and that is certainly a great sign for the village. So, skipping forward one page, you will, on the bottom of page six and seven, you will find your statement of activities, which we had just touched on the balance sheet. Here's your income statement at the government-wide level. I like to look at this as the most confusing statement in the audit report. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but it is split by your revenue source. So, you have your charges for service, your operating grants, your capital grants, and then down at the bottom, split across pages six and seven, you will find your general revenues. With sales tax being the driving revenue, the number-one revenue source of the village, I figured it's certainly important to talk about that tonight. Sales tax in the prior year, I'm combining your home rule and your regular sales tax, was approximately 23.1 million, whereas it had decreased this year to $21.6 million. There are a number of things that attribute that, but there was a lump sum payment that was received in the prior year, which had caused that number to be a little bit inflated. So, I anticipate that that number, barring any setbacks, would remain pretty consistent from year to year now, is at a six-and-a-half percent decrease this year. With that being said, I had touched on the total increase in your governmental activities. So, there were certainly other things that attributed, that offset that, that six-and-a-half percent decrease this year. So, that's great that your overall governmental activities had increased this year. On the next page, you will find your fund-level balance sheet. For the purpose of tonight's presentation, I'd like to just stick to the general fund. The general fund had increased by $25,000 this year, and in talking with Brian, with the budgeted deficit that was scheduled to occur in that general fund, I would certainly consider that a positive. Obviously, that number had increased. So, there were a number of different factors that did attribute to that, but again, when that number's going up, that's certainly a good sign. So, I'd like to skip to the notes to the financial statements, which can be found beginning on page 20. In summary, note one represents our summary of significant accounting policies. Note two is our budgetary stewardship and compliance. Note three is our detailed notes on the financial statements, and note four is our other information. I'm going to highlight a couple of the items that I think certainly need to be discussed tonight, and the first one can be found on pages 44. This is your long-term debt section. I had noticed this year that the installment contract of 2016 and the 2009 general obligation bonds were both paid off within fiscal year 2018. So, total remaining debt with your 2011 general obligation bonds is $5.4 million. So, certainly with the bond payoff, we look at that as a positive. So, another thing I would like to point out can be found on pages 56. This is your IMRF net pension liability. At the end of 2016, that liability was at $6.2 million. Due to sound investments by IMRF, their investment earnings on their plan assets, that number had actually decreased to a $3 million net pension liability. And again, that is almost 100 percent attributable to the investment earnings and the market conditions this year, but nonetheless, it is certainly a good sign to see your liabilities going down. So, one more item that I'd like to point out in the statistic, the financial section is, can be found on page 105. The village had a new agency fund this year, and this is where the financial statements can be found for that. So, that is the NE Lake County Consolidated ETF fund. So, if you're curious as to how that performed this year, this can be found on page 105. Now, on to everybody's favorite, the management letter. I'd like to point out that in prior years, we had two recommendations that are within the body of this management letter. We had noted no new current recommendations, which mean we had not identified anything related to financial reporting or internal controls that we determined necessary to notify the board. So, again, a great sign, no current recommendations this year. The two prior recommendations that can be found in this letter, one relates to GASB 74-75. I think Jessica Fane of our actuary team, who presented a couple of weeks ago, might be able to explain it a little bit better than I can, but in all in all, it's, if you recall, a couple of years back, GASB 67-68 was implemented, and GASB 74-75 is going to almost mimic what that GASB 67-68 did with the IMRF. However, this relates to retiree health plans. So, again, we'll work with Brian and his staff on obtaining an actuary, GASB 75 study for the upcoming year, and it'll, it'll change how the other post-employment benefit liability is reported in the financial statements. It's going to complicate things a little bit, but nothing that we're unable to handle. So, and the second comment that is within the management letter relates to funds over budget. So, you can see there, there are three funds that were over budget this year, and this is purely informational. We need to notify you of that. So, I'd like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you. I would echo Brad's comment about taking the time to read this, even though none of us are accountants. It is a great step back to see and understand where we are in the bigger picture. I wish I could get more residents to read this. But, you know, you pick up a lot of good information, you know, about how the village is performing. That does help us make informed decisions as we get ready to go into the next budget cycle. Hats off to Brian and his team. A clean audit is absolutely fantastic.
Absolutely.
So, that's good news. Any questions from the trustees for Brad? All right. Is it up online yet, Jack? Okay. But we're going to post this.
Probably shortly.
Okay. All right. No, I think it really is important for residents to read this, so.
I'd agree.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we'll see you next year.
I sure hope so. I was on my honeymoon this year, so I couldn't make field work, but hopefully next year.
That was a good reason. That was a very good reason. Good. And a clean audit, that you kind of set the bar there, Brian, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
At the Jawa meeting last week, they talked about All the Queen's Horses as a, as a movie that all village trustees and employees should watch.
I highly recommend it. I actually watched it last weekend. It is a very good film for.
It's a movie?
I highly recommend it.
It's about the Dixon fiasco.
Oh, the late, the.
And it's very.
I was very proud of it. Highly, highly recommend it. Very interesting.
I will watch that.
It's on Netflix.
Yes.
You can look it up.
Can I have somebody's Netflix password?
All the Queen's Horses.
No, I'm joking. All right. We'll move on. All right. I think Jack's going to be up next to talk us through, a month or two ago, we talked about auctioning off our Monopoles that are located at Zero Brookhaven Road and 11151 Keelborn. And none of us were really excited about the proposal, so Jack and Pat, I'm sure, went back and did some more research and has some more information for us, and.
Yeah.
You'll introduce him.
Yep. So, Jack's going to, like I said, Jack went back, asked around a little bit, tried to gather some more information up, so he's going to refresh our memory on that, and then we have some reps from Sell at Auction, the company that if we move forward, the village staff would recommend we partner with to make a quick presentation and then answer any questions the board may have, and really just looking for direction as to whether this is something we want to pursue or not.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board. So, as we had mentioned before, and I was here a couple of months ago discussing the same topic, so I'll go through this real quick, but I just want to give the background once again. So, there are three main categories of the different cell towers and lease agreements the village has. The first being the ones on water towers. The second one are the ones that have village equipment on these towers, and the third are the category that have neither any village equipment or that are on a water tower. So, these are just almost like a private sector enterprise that the village operates. Towers standalone that we lease out to the private sector. So, first one is the police station tower. This is on Brookhaven Road, not the one right next behind the police station, but this one's actually further back. The second one is the Public Works Tower. So, this one was built in 2001. This one's kind of hidden back behind Public Works facility, but it's also the same thing, where it's its own tower, no village equipment on this tower. So, following the board's direction from the last meeting, I did want to look out and kind of see what were other municipalities doing, what was the current practice. I reached out and designed a survey, reached out to a lot of my peers in the field, reached out through a listserv of 600 municipal contacts to kind of talk about who had similar towers to us. Of those, there was only two that actually responded that they had towers that were similar to ours, that operated without any village equipment, and that they own the leases of. A lot of them, what happens is they have a lease agreement, so they don't actually own the actual infrastructure of the tower. They own the land, but not the tower itself. Of these two municipalities, Deerfield and Frankfurt, they mentioned that they are currently, they have, each one has four tenants on them, and they're doing great. They have no interest in selling them, successful towers, good locations, and they have no problems with the tenants, so they're happy to get the monthly income. As we've mentioned before, that's not the case with these towers. So, what we're looking at is seeing is the long term, if we are to sell them, what would be our best option? So, looking around the marketplace, kind of see, based on previous comments too, what other firms do this? So, similar to if you're about to, I kind of equate this to selling your home. If you're going to sell your home, a lot of times, real estate agent's a smart idea. So, I went out and looked to see kind of who else did this. So, there's really only a couple that even are in this field. Most of them are on the East Coast if they do it, and then there's Sell at Auction who have national contracts everywhere. They're a newer firm, only a couple of years old, but they have a lot of experience. So, that's what we bring this proposal today. So, essentially, what we're eventually recommending, so not tonight, but at a future meeting, pending feedback from the board, we'd bring an agreement here to the board with Sell at Auction, essentially to waive any of the bidding requirements for a firm and to, you know, offer them a contract. What we do with Sell at Auction, after the agreement was agreed upon, we would determine what the minimum reserve price is, and we could also do this as part of our proposal as well. And this is based a lot on what we've heard from, received offers from in the past on these towers, and also on what Sell at Auction can provide us the expert insight into. Again, similar to a real estate agent, in a market where you don't know what your house is worth or what the market entails, they are the experts. They sell all the time. They know the industry really well. So, once we determine kind of what our reserve price is, this is basically the minimum. We know it. The other firms and the bidders do not. If that minimum is never met, we can back out of it. So, essentially, it's a, it's a safeguard for us, so that we get whatever our, our wanted income is, and we could get higher than that, too. Sell at Auction, what they do is they review the offers. Usually, they say they usually get between eight to 10. We know ours, they're going to be hot towers, so we're hoping to get a good response. And then what we can do is, we can bring the final response, so we could have our bids due on a Monday, and bring it to a board meeting that night, and then give, you know, essentially the village administrator authority to sign the next day, so the board could also be aware of what the final agreed upon price is. What then the buyer does, how Sell at Auction gets paid, is they then pay essentially a commission, similar to when you sell your house, you know, it would be a similar thing. They pay the 3% buyer's commission, and then everything gets signed upon, and we use also Sell at Auction's expertise to really help us with the contract, too. The sell industry, they do these all the time. They try to win the negotiation. So, having someone like Sell at Auction that has these expertise, so we don't get things like write a first refusal, or, you know, trying to minimize our other agreements, would be a huge win for us. So, these are kind of what we recommend with Sell at Auction, and so now that's kind of our, our background. I'm going to hand it over to Bud, and Bud's going to kind of explain a little bit about their firm.
Thank you, Jack. This is, I heard your great audit, so that was, that was a good thing. First of all, I'd like to thank Jack for arranging this meeting for us. We've been, this is, we're in our sixth year, so it's not, you know, we've been around a little bit longer than you may have gathered from my introduction. I'm Bud Blinnick. I'm the president. That's my partner, Mark Swizzlow. He's the chairman. Mark and I have known each other since college, so that's going back, you know, just a few years. We created Sell at Auction. My background is I'm a real estate broker, and I'm a real estate auctioneer, and I was also in the telecom business for seven years with two different companies. So, basically, I noticed that about six years ago, there was a void in the industry where there was no company representing predominantly municipalities, but also private owners of these cell towers and rooftop antenna easements that are being bombarded by companies looking to buy out and monetize them, in some cases, trying to take advantage of the unknowing. So, we created Sell at Auction as a vehicle, a sole source to monetize a value through competitive bidding, and we've created, we spent a good portion of our company creating a database of every major and minor cell tower owner in the country, and many of them reach out into the world, who buy these things. And so, we have contacts and have sold to many of these companies, including all the major, large companies which we'll go into. We helped turn these revenue streams into a lump sum, if that's something you're looking at. Again, we've created a central marketplace to create bidding. Mark and I, between the two of us, have over 50 years in the real estate business, either as brokers or as owners of property. I'm a licensed broker, I'm a managing broker, I'm a licensed auctioneer. Some of the other companies that Jack might have reached out to say that they're cell tower brokers, they're not licensed as brokers. We've done our due diligence. You know, if you're selling a piece of real estate, you need to be a licensed broker to do so. So, I've licensed here and in other states. Again, we have a priority proprietary database of qualified and active bidders that I talk to on a daily, weekly basis, because they're always calling on what we have and what we're getting. Go to the next one. Again, community. income is, and we could get higher than that, too. Sell at Auction, what they do is they review the offers. Usually, they say they usually get between eight to ten. We know ours, they're gonna be hot towers, so we're hoping to get a good response. Um, and then what we can do is, we can bring the final response, so we could have our bids due on a Monday, and bring it to a board meeting that night, and then give, you know, essentially, the village administrator authority to sign the next day, so the board could also be aware of what the final agreed-upon price is. What then the buyer does, how the, how Sell at Auction gets paid, is they then pay, um, essentially a commission, similar to when you sell your house, you know, it would be a similar thing. They pay the three percent buyer's commission, um, and then everything gets signed upon, and that we use also Sell at Auction's expertise to really help us with the contract, too. The sell industry, they do these all the time, they try to win the negotiation. So, having someone like Sell at Auction that has these expertise, so we don't get things like, uh, write a first refusal, or, um, you know, trying to minimize our other agreements, would be a huge win for us. So, these are kind of what we recommend with Sell at Auction, and so now, that's kind of our, our background. I'm gonna hand it over to Bud, and Bud's gonna kind of explain a little bit about their firm.
Thank you, Jack. This is, I heard your great audit, so that was, that was a good thing. First of all, I'd like to thank Jack for arranging this, uh, meeting for us. Uh, we've been, this is, we're in our sixth year, so it's not, you know, we've been around a little bit longer than you, you may have gathered from my introduction. Uh, I'm Bud Blinnick, I'm the president. That's my partner, Mark Swizzlow, he's the chairman. Uh, Mark and I have known each other since college, so that's going back, you know, just a few years. Um, we created Sell at Auction. My background is I'm a real estate broker, and I'm a real estate auctioneer, and I was also in the telecom business for seven years with two different companies. So, basically, I noticed that, uh, about six years ago, there was a void in the industry where there was no company representing predominantly municipalities, but also private owners of these cell towers, and rooftop antenna easements that are being bombarded by companies looking to buy out and monetize them, in some, in some cases, trying to, uh, take advantage of the unknowing. So, we created Sell at Auction as a vehicle, a sole source to monetize a value through competitive bidding, and we've created, we spent a good portion of our company creating a database of every major and minor cell tower owner in the country, and many of them reach out into the world, who buy these things. And so, we have contacts and have sold to many of these companies, uh, including all the major, large companies which we'll go into. We helped turn these revenue streams into a lump sum, if that's something you're looking at. Again, we've created a central, uh, marketplace to create bidding. Mark and I, between the two of us, have over fifty years in the real estate business, either as brokers or as owners of property. Uh, I'm a licensed broker, I'm a managing broker, I'm a licensed auctioneer. Some of the other companies that Jack might have reached out to, uh, say that they're cell tower brokers, they're not licensed as brokers. We've done our due diligence. You know, if you're selling a piece of real estate, you need to be a licensed broker to do so. Uh, so I, I've licensed here and in other states. Again, we have a priority proprietary database of qualified and active bidders that I talk to on a daily, weekly basis, because they're always calling on what we have and what we're getting. Go to the next one. Um, again, communities and private owners have been getting income. I can see by what you've got, you're getting a lot of income from these, um, some on your water towers. Uh, what's going on in the industry right now, particularly on your, uh, tower by the, um, it's the Keelborn Tower, is you have two tenants on there, T-Mobile and Sprint. Sprint's paying forty thousand dollars a year in rent, which is great. However, there's a very good chance that Sprint and T-Mobile are going to merge in a couple of years, if not sooner. If and when that happens, you'll lose one of those leases. I mean, it'll take a couple of years for the spectrum to blend and the companies to blend, but having two carriers, two antennas from the same company is redundant. So, there's a possibility to use, probability to use one of those revenue streams. Uh, there are large private and public companies that actively bet on these things. The top four private company, uh, public companies are SBA, American Tower, and Crown Castle. I've done business with all of them. The largest privately-held tower company is a company called Vertical Bridge. We've done business with them. So, while we're not a big company, we deal with all the big companies. These are companies that own forty thousand-plus towers. Uh, we create, uh, competitive bidding. We help determine the best value by, uh, in terms of price and terms. Terms is very important. As Jack alluded to, you can get different price offers, but you also have to consider since these are on, you're selling the tower with, on village property, some of these companies will also offer a component of what we call revenue share. They'll buy the tower, they'll buy the income stream, but they may offer the city revenue. So, for example, on the police station where you have T-Mobile, XYZ company buys the tower, then they put AT&amp;T on it. Some companies will make you an offer saying they're not willing to share revenue, and some companies will say, we'll give you a percentage of any additional revenue we got on that tower. That's why the sealed bid process is so valuable to you, because you can compare apples and oranges to come up with the same, to come up with an idea what works best for you. So, that's an advantage of what we do. We, we can structure this in a way that people bring in offers, and you can see what their offers are and value the pros and cons of each of them. Our expertise is in helping, you know, get to the highest and best value. I've had several situations where we've worked with, we've come to a municipality, you're getting offers, all of a sudden, they see that we're involved, and they know that there's gonna be competitive bidding, and we've seen huge bumps in what their previous bids were, knowing that if they don't reach, they make their highest and best prices right away, they're gonna lose these sites. Remember, there's ten bidders, there's only one winner. So, these other ones really have to reach, and will reach very hard, because these are, as what we call diamonds in the rough. These companies, this is their business model, they look to buy these sites. Okay. Um, the ninety top companies own a hundred and twenty-five thousand towers, that's not even including rooftop access rates they have to malls, office buildings, apartment buildings, auto dealerships, cemeteries. Uh, Crown Castle is the largest, American Towers, second largest, SBA, Vertical Bridge, every company that's listed on there, we've done business with, um, and there's a plethora of other companies. We have them all in our database, I have the person that is responsible to get this information, and just because we sent out a, a web blast doesn't mean that I don't follow up the next day with a phone call, you know, "Bill, did you get my email?" "Yes, I did." "Well, the offers are due on Monday, December fifth, do you have any questions?" We post all our due diligence on our website. The due diligence are copies of the current easement or lease agreements. Uh, in your case, we want a copy of a title report, a survey, uh, copies of the last four or five months' rent, justification that you're actually collecting the rent, 'cause they wanna see that, um, and, and things like that. Uh, they submit their offers in the form of a letter of intent, and then, from there, once you select who your winning bidder is, after reviewing them and maybe going back for a best and final, the best and final is usually be between the two top or, two or three companies, if they're close. You know, we're not gonna do a best and final to the person that's two hundred thousand dollars, you know, below everybody else. We identify cash, uh, you don't have any capital budget problems, you don't have any shortfalls. Um, there are risks in these, like, for example, I've talked to several municipalities that are kicking themselves in the pants, because three years ago, they could've sold a Sprint lease for a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, and now they're in jeopardy of losing that revenue. Three years ago, nobody would've thought US Cellular, Cellular was gonna leave the market. Anybody that didn't sell a US Cellular tower now has a vacant piece of ground. One of the things that I don't mention on here is that you're selling the tower, and probably gonna wanna sell the piece of ground and create a new tax ID number for it. Now, all of a sudden, that parcel goes on the tax rolls. Right now, you're not collecting tax on it. Not only, you'll, you'll get tax revenue from it. So, there's a lot of different ways to boost the, boost the, uh, income for the city, the village. Uh, again, we create a, a competitive marketplace. Uh, we, uh, the sealed bid promotes competition, uh, delivering maximum results in a short time, and allows you to have bidders compete against each other from all over the country and the, and the, and the states. It eliminates the, this is, this is probably the key reason right now, why, you know, we're in business. When a municipality in particular wants to sell, they have to make sure that the, that the site, the asset is publicly marketed. So, the public cannot say, this was, you got, how did you get it to market? Who did you offer it to? Who, who was out there that, did you miss XYZ company? My brother-in-law's stepson works for, uh, Phoenix Towers, no, they didn't know that there was an auction. So, we eliminate that concern, that this isn't an arms, that this is an arms-length transaction. It's put out to bid, and all the qualified bidders are notified, and there's no question that the money was left on the table. We create a sense of urgency. These companies are out there looking all the time for these assets. We say that the bids are due on such and such a time, they have to focus on that, because if they wait a couple of weeks, they're gonna miss an opportunity. So, we create a sense of urgency. And if you're the high, sometimes, and most, more often than not, the bidders, that the winning bidder typically pays more than they would have liked to, but because they knew it was done at an auction, we eliminate the buyer remorse. They don't retrade afterwards. You know what I mean? It's like, sometimes you buy a house, you do your inspection to say, "I want five thousand dollar credit for the roof." There's no retrading the price. It's very important in, uh, your consideration on who to pick and, uh, what to sell it for. Uh, those are just picture examples of some of the sites that we've sold, uh, towers, easements on water towers. Uh, the one on the bottom was actually a Verizon tower that was built and, uh, camouflaged with a silo that was put around it, because it was on an equestrian facility, and, uh, so, you know, the people that rode their horses there just thought it was another haystack. But, um, uh, if, that's, you know, I'll keep it short and simple. I'm a salesman, I like to talk, but I'll open it up for any questions.
Are we selling the land and the tower, or just the tower?
So, we can do multiple.
You can do both. You can sell the land, or you can keep the land and just sell the tower. That's the advantage of a sealed bid. You can look at all the offers.
And we can do first, uh, variety of timeframes, too. And so, we could actually put it out there, we could do a twenty-five-year easement, a fifty-year easement, and we could do this all within the same bidding process. So, we could have them, we could give out an à la carte of different options, and then see our options and weigh through, you know, and some of them may respond, they may say, "We're only gonna do a thirty-year, um, where we get the full easement," or some might say that they wanna just buy out the easements of the other, the other cell carriers. So, there's a lot of different varieties of ways we can structure it, and then we can kind of pick and choose our best.
And these, and these, uh, these buyers are very creative, because they've gone through every scenario there is. So, the whole structure, they might give you a, a menu, each one might give you a menu. If we do this, in a fifty-year easement or a thirty-year easement, we'll do this, if we do this, we'll share some of the revenue on a fifty-fifty basis, a seventy-thirty basis. There's all kinds of, uh, combinations and permutations that, uh, they can come in at. And the benefit to you is you could get to see the value, what's the best value to you. You're selling the tower, the, the, the tower structure. Whether you sell the land or not, it's strictly up to you if you wanna do that or not. If you prefer not to, then, then you don't. Some people wanna sell the land, some people don't.
So, would we have a land lease?
Yes.
A leasehold, it would be a leasehold?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, questions from the trustees before I ask anymore? All right, I'll start on the end. Trustee Jacobs?
Sure. Um, maybe I'm a little thick here, but I, I, I need to see the forest of the trees here. I, I, I get this, we, we wanna sell these, these, uh, towers, but why in the world are these folks coming in and wanting to knock down the doors to buy these things? From what I'm hearing, you say is, the, these cellular companies are disappearing, you know, like, like, uh, like there's no tomorrow, yet everybody's knocking on the door to buy these things. How is that possible?
Uh, first of all, uh, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile aren't going anywhere. I mean, they're only growing. Sprint may or may not go. Nobody knows. These buyers, when they come and knock on your door, do a negative sell. They're almost talking out of both sides of their mouths. Well, we wanna buy it, and we're real anxious to buy it, but we'll pay a low number, because that, you know, they make their money on the spread. You know, there are some companies that were in the business, we called aggregators or aggravators. They would come in and they would, um, as Jack had experience with, they would come and make lowball offers, you know, putting fear into you that if you don't sell now, prices are going down. The prices actually are going up. This, the, the five G coming here, which is the next, just name for the next service, there's, there's a more, stronger and stronger demand for cell towers, and you've probably been talked to and approached for small cells, which is, I won't even get into that debacle.
That, well, actually, that's the second part of my question, 'cause everything we're hearing is, everybody just wants to put them on top of stoplights and, and the little light poles in all the neighborhoods, so.
Yes, but they all go, they all, they all go back to, those are called microsites.
Okay.
And they cover five hundred to a thousand feet on a busy street, but they all have to feed back into a macro site, which is your cell tower or your rooftop antenna, in order for the signal to be dispersed. So, yeah, they do want more s- small cells, but there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of new towers being put up right now. So, I mean, the tower industry is thriving. The negative cell that you hear from people calling you is talking out of both sides of their mouths, which is why, you know, we're in business. So, it's a great question. Yeah, they come and say, yeah, we're, everyone's going out of business, but we wanna buy. And by the way, they're looking for more sites to put up more towers.
Consumers, they have multiple devices now that are, uh, that are connected to cell towers. So, you're supposed to be allowed to just sell minutes, they were, they were, you know, the cell, the cell signal, and now it's downloading a lot of data, movies, you know, that's a cell tower, you know, but they're, they're the basis of all connectivity there, so I don't think they're gonna go away.
Texting, email, going, you, you use your phone and listen to Pandora, that's coming through the cell towers. That's, that's not coming through satellites. You know, Sirius Radio is coming through satellites, but if you're on Pandora or Spotify, it's coming through the cell towers.
We saw what happened with Sirius Radio, they merged with XM, so, you know, that's one less player in the market, and the same thing's happening with the cell towers, you know, less and less players in the market, so why is there demand, you know, if it needs to be spread out, or does it need to be thinned out? Does the herd need to thin?
You know, MetroPCS is now T-Mobile MetroPCS.
Right.
It's just, you know, buying a, a cheaper, uh, program, but then if you exceed your data, you're gonna get nailed. Talk to my daughters.
And my two sons.
That's why we have, uh, you know, one-size-fits-all plan now with us.
Going to your point, to your point, if we think there's gonna be less and less in the market, that's another reason I feel that we should get rid of the things, because once we start losing people, then what, the tower's empty, it's not doing anything for us, versus getting some cash up front and.
Sure, but.
Someone else's problem.
At, at the same side, if, if in fact, there is all this pent-up demand growing in the future, why do we wanna get rid of them, when we have the, a potential, uh, revenue stream for ever and ever? If Deerfield and Frankfurt are keeping them, why are we selling?
We haven't had anybody knocking on our doors about these two locations in a long time. The police department tower, I mean, T-Mobile's been the only one on it since we put it up, haven't heard a peep from anybody else. So, that's the worry on my part, is that, I mean, we don't know how to market these things, don't have the knowledge, the staff time, so they're just sitting there, stagnant.
Patrick, that's another good point. These cell tower companies all have contacts with all the carriers. They know where they're going to be expanding their coverage. The possibility in an offer that they are the purchaser and offer a revenue share model is a way for them to buy, you can monetize, and then down the road, if they put AT&amp;T or Verizon on it, you can share some potential additional revenue. There's your upside. The downside, I mean, they could also, someone could make a, a crazy offer, high, and say, "We're not gonna share revenue, but we're paying a premium to not share it." So, you, you know, the highest and best price might not be the best value for you down the road. That's the advantage of a sealed bid.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Thorsonson?
Well, I still think my remaining question, although I'm really intrigued by all the options of financing here, um, is the information that you gave us, Jack, actually, in the committee of the whole, where you said here that the annual revenue for the two sites combined is approximately a hundred and fifteen K?
Correct.
I wanted to know if you could walk us through that, and that, or is that a hypothetical or a lowball as the option of?
Jack, I.
That's the, oh.
And you wanna go through what the current rent of the three carriers are right now?
So, that, that's what we're currently receiving between the three. So, we receive monthly payments, so we have the two towers, one tenant, one tower has two tenants, the other tower has one tenant. So, every month, we receive essentially a rent check, or annually, I guess, and so that total then is, adds up to the hundred and fifteen number from before. Yeah, so that's currently what our rent is. So, essentially, when we figure out what the value of it is, we, basically, it's, it's just, uh, um, you know, we do a money factor. So, we see that if, let's say, we sold the two for, again, offers we were seeing out there, you know, two-point-one million for the two. So, then you factor what time that is, it's basically the equivalent of twenty years' worth of rent. So, that's where you factor, if we did a fifty-year easement, your first thought would be, well, we're losing out on thirty years' worth of rent, but with how money essentially, um, continually grows in value, um, with inflation, really, with net present value, it's, it's better than that. It's kinda, the, it's closer of a recoup, I guess, if that makes sense.
So, then that two-point-one hypothetical, uh, would come in at a revenue stream like a, like if you were a landlord, not an upfront payment?
No, it's a, it's an upfront payment, it's a lump sum, you get it at closing. Wire transferred right in, you know, that's, it's a closing, just like a, a real estate transaction.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and to further on that, too, that could be one option. So, the other options could be, we get a million dollars upfront, and then, you know, hypothetically, fifty percent of revenue share after every second and third, fourth tenant. So, if they ended up, if they come in, a private sector marketer, who in my, you know, my assumption would be they would do a much better job of getting it out there, getting these towers filled up with tenants, um, we could then share in the revenue from there. So, then we could be, it wouldn't be what we're currently making monthly, I wouldn't guess, but it could make up a good portion of that, plus we got the money up front as well, to help kinda hedge that.
And these tower companies will market these towers to get additional revenue. It's in their best interest, and if they do a revenue share, it would be in your best interest.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Questions to my left here?
Is there a, is there a guarantee of a revenue share? Is that something you just build in and they have to accept?
What, what we do is, we put this out to bid, and we will recommend that a component of revenue share would be, uh, a, a strong consideration in reviewing the offers. So, they will, you know, they'll offer a number, a, a price, and a revenue share. I don't wanna put out there what you want the revenue share to be, because I wanna give them the opportunity to pay more revenue share than a less of a revenue share, but they all have their, their various models. So, yes, you, I mean, you have the right to, you know, you can go back to them, the high bidder, and say, "You offered a twenty, twenty-five percent revenue share, we want forty percent." And that's a negotiation that goes on down the line.
I guess my other question is, you know, we would be selling an asset for a one-time fee, and what would we, as a village, do with that one-time fee? and what would we as a village do with that one-time fee, because we got one shot at this thing, and if we blow the money, we got no resource at all, so that's.
Well, hopefully, we don't blow the money.
Well, not blow it, but if we go spend.
It would go in, it would go into the general fund, and it's up to the board to appropriate that as, so it would show up as a revenue in the general fund.
Sure.
And then this board would decide through the budgeting process, you know, based on staff recommendations, where we put that money, and it's up to the board to decide how it's spent.
Right, but it would be spent, and, and so then.
Or it could go into reserves.
Doesn't have to be spent.
Yeah.
Well, the question is, what have we got, what are our plans with those dollars, should we sell it? And I think that is a big question. I mean, you're selling an asset that's a, that provides a recurring revenue stream, and all of a sudden, it's gone if you sell it. And then eventually, as you know, money, money gets spent, and so then, you know, my question is, if we did sub, if we followed that scenario, what good would that do us? And, I mean, it's not, it's not as if we need money, but, so my question is, why are we looking at selling such an asset?
Well, that we, basically, we've invested in towers. We, we paid to build those towers.
Well, no.
No, they, those were put in.
It was a, it was a rent-a-bait.
Yeah, it was rent, yeah, rent-a-bait. So, somebody else paid for it, so, you know, we didn't, and so now we have to chase the rent. Obviously, we're not maximizing it.
Are you managing and maintaining the tower structure?
Yeah, we, I, we're under no obligation, Greg, that's why it's a committee, the whole discussion.
I'm trying to understand, understand why we would do it, too.
You know, I just, I know the amount of time that staff takes trying to chase down lease payments and figure out which tower goes through, and if something happens to the tower, we have to maintain it. You know, is it, do we really want to be, it's like anything, is it within our scope of responsibility to be in the landlord business for a cell tower? You know, there's pros and cons to that.
Yeah, the two big ones that popped in my mind, as far as what we could use this for, is help with Fire Station 3, if we're going to do a third fire station, or the relocation of a substation at Gurnee Mills. So, those are going to be two one-time costs related to capital improvements, and that's what, when you have one-time dollar amounts like this, lump sum payments, you spend those on one-time projects. So, it could, those are just two that pop into my mind.
And the other question I have is, 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 I'm just trying to understand, if you sold the cell tower and the property that it sits on, what do you do with the rest of the property? Because now you've got a piece of property with a hole in it.
Well, you don't have to sell it. I mean, that's, that's a decision that you can make down the road. You'll wait, you'll, you'll get offers for both, for just the long-term easement, or for a purchase of the, even if they bought the land where the easement is, which is probably not likely, they will still need an easement to get to the, and the easements, because they need 24/7 access to that tower, because if one of the carriers goes down, they need to get there right away, because they can't afford the downtime. So, selling the tower structure with a long-term easement may be the better, better choice. And you don't have to pay for the maintenance of the tower, which can be costly. Now, these are relatively new towers, so I've seen some towers built in the 1930s that have a lot of deferred maintenance, but that's, that's another consideration.
They will need maintenance at some point.
They all need maintenance, you know, eventually.
Trustee Hood.
I just, more comments. I agree really with Pat in terms of our approach. It's, I feel just the obligation I have to the citizens to at least look into the revenue stream, to see what we could get. We don't have to, to sell them, we put the minimum bid in, and we see what comes. And from my perspective, it's a more conservative route to, if we get a high enough bid, to accept that, because to me, what the future might bring, I can't guarantee cell towers are going to continue to multiply. It seems like years ago that no one would have thought that we would have what we have today. So, I'm guessing that the same will be true in another 10, 15, 20 years. So, why should we wait and see our income stream continue to go down, if that were the case? Because we haven't done anything with the towers. For how many years have we received the, the same income stream?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think our leases are set up, they're five-year terms, and then there's an increase, but at some point, we're going to, I think, rent-wise, price our cell phone, and they're going to find a cheaper place to put their antennas that's close, so.
So, I just think we owe it to ourselves to at least venture into the market to see what's there, and we're not under any obligation to sell. And, you know, that's where we could have the real discussion, to see what it's worth, but at this point, it doesn't seem, you know, even discussing what we're going to spend our money on, it's more like, well, let's just see what we can get, and we haven't, it's not going to cost us anything to hire these guys, right?
Correct.
And ultimately, when it sells, and if we agree to the sale, then obviously, it's when you make your money, but before that, there's no money that we spend, it's, it's time. So, I think that we owe it to the citizens, and, and I just want to find out, you know, what's it worth? And then we can decide, is it worth it to sell, or should we hang on to it?
And then I have a question. Thank you, Tom, for your comments. If the new owner, let's say we go out to bid, we get a great, great number, whatever, what's to prohibit the new owner, when these things renew and stuff, to make it cost prohibitive, and then we lose coverage in town, and cellphone coverage is very important to our residents?
The cost prohibitive to?
To lease anymore, then they, and then, I mean, they're going three carriers, maybe four carriers, soon to be maybe three. So, there's not a lot of competition in the market to be on a cell tower, and if we sell it to someone, one of those companies, Castle Rock or whatever, and they make the lease so prohibitive that that, that one of those three carriers just goes somewhere else, we could lose coverage in town, or end up with gaps in coverage, which is an issue we have now, where some people with certain phone, cell service can't get good coverage. That would be an issue for our residents, just like any other utility. Residents kind of expect cell coverage to be a utility anymore.
That's a phenomenal question. The answer is, these tower companies all have relationships with the carriers. They have to work together, because they work on thousands of deals together. Some of them, some of the tower companies, you know, most, first of all, most of the carriers that built the tower companies sold their towers, because they don't want to own the towers, they just want to provide service to the, the, the people out there that are using the devices. So, it's predominantly the tower companies that own them. If they make a cost prohibitive, the carrier, it's not as though the tower can be picked up from the police station here and moved over here.
Right.
So, they can't, so the tower can't go anywhere. It's not, you know, subway can move from this shopping center to this shopping center.
They could move their antenna to another location.
To where?
Well, to some other tower, somewhere.
They have to get zoning and permitting and everything from the city, you kind of control that process.
Well, or the unincorporated areas.
Well, but, you know, these are, it's a good question. The reality is, is that they never.
We have no control anymore, or limited control. So, AT&amp;T could just said, say, "I'm fed up with the price of leasing space on a tower in Gurnee, I'm going to go farther out to get a better rent, and then we get worse coverage."
Then they, then they lose market share in Gurnee, and that's the last thing they want to do, is lose market share. They're all out getting, trying to get you to switch from Verizon to AT&amp;T to Sprint to T-Mobile, to provide better coverage, this is why they're doing all the small cell installations, they're trying to provide better coverage. The, the last thing they want to do is create gaps.
So, my question's back to Jack. So, this is kind of, if we thought of this as an investment property, and I didn't want to be bothered, or we didn't want to be bothered with managing an investment property, you could hire a leasing agent, and that leasing agent then maintains it and markets, markets the apartment, the, the tower and stuff. Are there companies that do that?
There are, and that was one that, that is a potential, another thing that we looked at, is a leasing company that could manage it for a fee. There's a couple that do it, kind of looking around in the marketplace. It's, it's mainly more of a, of a private sector venture, in that essentially, the companies that they, they have come on, but are you familiar with some of the, I'm, the name's slipping me right now, there's a, one that starts with an S, that does a lot of leasing management.
I don't really deal with them, am I?
Okay, but there, there are, but what I, from what I've seen, in how they market it, and what they, their take is, that is an option we could, we could look into.
I don't know, this is just.
It's just if we wanted to stay in this business, essentially, and we would still be the owner, we'd still be the landlord, we would hire basically someone to do the, the day-to-day maintenance of it. So, that is, there is, and I would be willing to look into that more.
I just don't, I just, for whatever reason, I just don't, it just seems sketchy, for some reason, and maybe it's just because it's so new and not uncommon, I just feel like, it's like the people who sell you electricity when they call you on the phone, it just, I don't know, something's not, I'm not getting it warm and fuzzy on the process. I'll leave it up to the board, which direction you want to give, Jack, it's just, I don't know.
Let's give it a shot, come on.
We can give it a shot and see what happens.
I agree, it sounds like we have an asset that we just don't know how to truly value yet, and if we're bringing it to the right people to bring it to the market, at least we get a better price for that asset.
I'm satisfied, my question answered.
Try it out.
Yeah, try it out.
Okay.
Do we have final say? Should we not like the number? We can say no at any time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about setting an unpublished reserve that we don't convey to the buying public. So, it's, it's just between us, so that we know, I mean, if you're looking for $5 million as an unpublished reserve, and I know that that's not the market value, I wouldn't waste your time doing that, because I know that you couldn't achieve the price you want. So, that's something that we need to discuss, is what the unpublished reserve is. It would have to be a number that you're happy with, not a number that you're not happy with.
So, how we see it, too, kind of the next phase in this process, is that we would bring the recommendation essentially to waive the bidding process, select sell-at auction as our, our broker representative, and at that point, you know, we'd come with, you know, we will negotiate still commission, and then we could also set the reserve by that point, too. And bring it to the board, and then they go out, they do the process, they go through, it'll take a little bit of time, and then the final bids then would come in, we could review as the board, and I don't know how long they usually give you, but whether it would be a week that we could decide during that time, we could bring it to the board, here are all of our options, here's what staff recommends, similar to the electric aggregation, and then make our, our move at that point after, so then the board would have two more opportunities to review before it's finalized.
Okay. I think you have consensus from the board.
Okay, we'll work on.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mark, and I appreciate this very much.
All right, item number five is, we're going to review the Cemetery Road Reservoir Condition Assessment Report and a Proposed Maintenance Program Contract.
Yeah, so, as you know, our water towers are on a maintenance program with SUEZ, formerly utility service. We've had good luck with those. The way we structured the, the payment for that is, the first three years is a higher payment, then it drops off year four. So, at the end of this fiscal year, all of our water towers will be outside that three-year program, so they're all dropped down to the, the second-tier dollar amount. That frees up some funding in the utility fund. The Cemetery Road Reservoir, I mean, that's where all of our water comes in for Jala, it's a 3 million, 3 million gallon reservoir, built in 1992, concrete, while we've done dive inspections on a regular basis. As far as formalized annual maintenance program, there hasn't been one, starting to show its age, so we brought in SUEZ to take a look at it. So, Bill Murphy's here. With SUEZ, he's going to walk through that condition assessment, and then he had put, based on what he saw, put some pricing together to get it on a maintenance program, like you do with the water towers, so if that's something that the Vos Board is interested in, we can plug that number in for the proposed budget for next year, and get that on that program. So, I'll let Bill, and then Brett Fritzler, our utility supervisor, you going to kick it off, Brett? Okay, well, I stole Brett's thunder, so, but Brett's here, obviously Brett's the expert on the water system, and then worked with Bill on our water towers, so. Okay. I think it's all you, Bill.
All right, thank you. My name's Bill Murphy, and I'm the water system, I'm the water system consultant for Northern Illinois Utility Service Company, and our parent company, SUEZ Advanced Solutions. With me tonight is John Linder from Muncie, Indiana. John is the director or the line of business leader for our new line, concrete wastewater and water surfaces. It's a separate division, apart from the steel tanks, but what I wanted to do tonight was go over the two things that you mentioned, basically, a quick review of our company that you're already working with, and then talk about the condition of the tank. I did, when I got into town this afternoon, I got a phone call from my son, and it was just a quick one, it just basically said, "Yeah, you know, you were showing me the slides, you got a lot of slides, you're going on late tonight, and there are kind of some gross slides, too, with the inside of the tank." Trying to find something happy, I got to go buy, that was it. So, I looked at my phone, I, the one best I could come up with something happy was that, I am a granddaughter, some.
Oh.
That's my daughter, granddaughter Isabella, and so I wanted to start off with something good, because it is late, and we are going to see some gross stuff in, with the tank. And I do have a lot of slides, so you may see me skipping through a few, because it is late, and you guys will ask questions, where do you want, and I'd rather bring more slides than not enough. So, essentially, in 2010, Gurnee entrusted the care of the first steel tank with us, and every few years after that, you put the other, other two tanks on, and now what we're here for tonight is to basically ask you to entrust us with the care of the, the concrete reservoir, the Cemetery Road Reservoir. And so, as I mentioned, basically, I'm going to just cover the business model that we do, some new members of council who weren't here back in 2010, when we put the Northwest Hydropillar on, and so it'll be a little bit of, it's an alternative procurement model for maintenance, and maybe some of you are not familiar with what a concrete tank looks like, so I brought some pictures of that from the condition assessment. Okay, quickly about our, our company, founded in 1963, a company that painted tanks. By the time 1985 rolled around, we actually had developed a business model whereby we take care of the entire asset, not just the coating part, and it's a different business model. It was very successful, and by the time that I started here in 2004, I started talking with Gurnee, and by, and by the time 2010 came around, I met the director, Tom, we had municipal, about 2,000 municipalities under agreements in the United States, for a total protecting about 5,000 water tanks. Essentially, with our parent company now, we've got many different facets of unique, sustainable maintenance models, and everything from source water to the tap. But the biggest ones in the United States are really the steel and the concrete structures now. And, and if you've got this many tanks on program, you've got to have enough crews to do the work. So, we've got service centers, over 130 crews nationwide, that just take care of painting tanks, and service centers that have repair crews, and welders, and washout crews, and engineering to administer everything you need to take care of this many tanks nationwide. Need water on them, kind of?
Tom wants to get some.
Oh, thanks. I was thinking one of those little white things on the corner of my mouth. All right. Remind me of high school. All right, so, with respect to the tanks in Gurnee, three steel tanks and the concrete reservoir, currently, the service comes out of our service center in New Lennox, Illinois. So, we're stationed locally, and to sup. Thank you very much, Patrick. Faster when my mouth. Has water, that's a good thing. Hopefully, you can, can everybody hear me okay?
Thanks, sir.
Okay. And to supplement the, the care of the tanks with the concrete side, because concrete is such a specialized coating, the idea is, we need to have people that are specialized in that, so we actually, SUEZ went out and acquired OdoLink, which is where John comes from, and, and he's been hired and tasked with leading that line of business as well. The blue dots on here are the, the water system consultants such as myself, and all those green dots are our service centers that we have around the country to take care of tanks. We're the only company that does this nationwide. All right, so this is the business model that you're, you're employing currently to take care of the three store, the three steel tanks, and we'd like you to use it on your concrete reservoir as well, all right? It's a full-service asset management program, and the idea is simple. Basically, come out, assess the condition of the tank, come up with a, an engineering plan to renovate the tank, bring it back to a baseline condition, one that we can warranty it long-term, so that we could actually lit, commit to a fixed price to take. so that we could actually lit, commit to a fixed price to take care of the tank and infinitum. As long as you want to be on the program, you will know what it costs to take care of that tank. It's very different from the traditional model where it typically is reactive and it's neglected. And if the tank gets to a point where it degrades and you have this very large repair bill on the front end, and you, thank you, Tom, we've got a backup now. And you, you, when it's, when it can't wait any longer, you've got this big spike in the budget to take care of the tank and then renovate it. But by that time, it gets so bad, it's a larger bill. So the idea here is that you still only control the tank, but we're entirely responsible for all the maintenance. Everything that AWWA, American Water Works Association, you know, EPA, OSHA requires when you're working on a tank, all of those regs, that we make sure that your tank is compliant with that and keep the tank in a great shape. So that's the whole idea with that. It all, it all starts with inspections, which we do annually. And then all of the maintenance tasks that are associated, we know what those are going to be upfront. We can tell you what frequency we're going to do them, and we can commit to a price to do all of that. And in exchange for you allowing us to do that work, we commit to that and, and provide a perpetual warranty on the coatings and take care of everything with respect to the tanks. So you have an organized program in place that you know the work's getting done, you get to see it done, you can, you know who to call in event there's an issue, but the idea is that we're going to catch issues before they happen to keep everything in good shape. And that's what you're doing right now with the steel tanks. And so if I had to break it down to three benefits, really, these are my, the three I think are most valuable to municipalities. Number one is you optimize your results, you get better results, all of your tanks. We look at it every year, if there's a problem, we just come fix it. There will be problems, we've had issues, I know we had issues with Heather Ridge tank where the coatings started failing. You know, the traditional model, low bid guy comes in and doesn't work one-year warranty. Problems never show up that fast. Usually, you're going to have something, it's going to show up year three to year five, somewhere in there. And we've had issues like that on these tanks. With our program, there's no change orders, we just come and we take care of it. So you, you know what it's going to cost to take care of the tank, and you get better results. Another thing I like to emphasize is that you shift the risk. Utility Service SUEZ is entirely accountable for all the maintenance. Like I said, you still own the tank and control it, but we're responsible for the maintenance. And we're accountable because there's no change orders. When there's a problem with something, we come fix it. That's how we get work, is by cities who use our service recommending us. So I don't have anybody quitting program, and that's a very good thing.
It flattens the budget.
So the administrators, accountants love this type of a program because you actually know what you're going to spend. There's no surprises as far as the budget. With the, with the concrete tank, this cemetery reservoir, there is a spike. Because nothing has been done to it, and it needs some work to get it in a baseline condition, and it's a very large tank. So, that being said, there is a big spike. But one of the great things that we do in addition to flattening the budget is we allow municipality to spread the upfront payments. Take the annual fees for the first couple of years, add them in with the upfront, the UR we call upfront renovation number, and then spread it equally, or we can customize it, whatever the city needs. So that's another good thing. And as I mentioned, you know, with Gurnee, and most cities in Illinois do this, they add the tanks one at a time, which forces us to keep proving ourselves to you. The, the agreement that we have with the municipality currently, and we would ask, that we have proposed for the cemetery reservoir, concrete tank, it's an evergreen agreement. That once you pay off the spread, basically, it's a year-by-year agreement that you know what the costs are to take care of everything with that tank. And includes the future paint jobs, no more big spikes in the future. And we have to live by that. And you can fire us on a yearly basis, so that you have that protection. But nobody is, is quitting the program, so I like that about it.
So obviously, we're doing some things right.
You know, you added the Heather Ridge tank in 2012, and you added Pembroke, the tank by Six Flags in 2015. So, the tank we've proposed, you, you allow us to take care of in the future, starting in 2019, is Cemetery Road. It's a 3 million gallon tank, roughly 30 feet tall, 150 feet in diameter, made of precast concrete walls, got a casted place floor and roof. Its ceiling is supported by concrete support posts. You know, it's got a concrete decorative gunite spray on the outside with some architectural panels that are block. It's got steel piping and appurtenances, all the moving parts are, are steel. So you've got steel coatings as well as concrete coatings needed on the tank. As it stands right now, the tank's online. And that's part of the problem, is that it's not lined, so nothing's protecting the concrete. And you heard me mention earlier, the concrete is a very complex and tricky surface. It's a lot different than steel, in that when you look at a steel tank that's been degrading because it's been neglected, you can see where the rust is, right? And, and so you can, and you can make repairs a lot easier in that. You can go and you can torch cut off a piece of steel, and you can weld a new piece on. Concrete's a different beast, in that the, you know, it's, its strength is really derived from the interior where the rebar is at. And if it's not protected, it's going to develop cracks and spalls, and it may have bug holes from the original pore. And there's different ways that the water is going to ingress into the tank. And unfortunately, and ironically, the industry has marketed the concrete tanks as maintenance-free. And I think, it's obviously, it's been a bad thing for those who own them because on the backside, you get up around 20, 25 years, and you start seeing the breakdown. Anybody who has a concrete driveway or a sidewalk in front of their house knows that concrete does break down over time. Well, it's even worse in a, in a scenario where it's storing potable water because the concrete derives its strength from the pH character of the, of the, of the cement paste in it. But the water that you're actually storing is highly acidic. And so, and the concrete itself without a coating is porous, and, and the acid eats on it, and it actually, the, the water itself can ingress into the areas where your rebar is connected. And when the rebar corrodes, it pushes the concrete on the surface off its falls, it's a never-ending cycle. So part of what we do with our maintenance is to renovate that on the front and get the concrete in a position where it will accept a good liner and then perpetually warranty that going forward, so that your tank will be protected. That was probably a lot more than you want to hear about concrete tanks and stuff. But I think it's important that you understand it because you're comparing this, it's a different, it's an alternative model for maintenance compared to the traditional model. So I want to make sure that you're aware of what you've got currently with your steel tank maintenance and what we're proposing for the concrete. This is a side view of that tank. With the precast, you can see the panels and the architectural panels up above. Essentially, the comparison of the two steel and concrete basically is same, so it's the same type of program. You've got the same design of the tank for storing, the same operation features. Most of the appurtenances are the same types, the same requirements as far as the regs, the regs governing the use of the tank for sanitary. And you have the need for protective coatings in both situations, which I went into a little bit of detail. This isn't a picture from your tank, but it just illustrates the, the end game of where a tank goes if it doesn't eventually get protected. The concrete, eventually, the latency layer, the outer inch and a half of the cement paste gives way and then, because it's spalled off, and then the steel is no longer strong and it's corroding as well. And you've got a lot more repair work because you've got to actually get down to aggregate and concrete that's not broken or compromised. So you want to avoid that, you want to be as proactive as possible with that situation. So this slide just talks about some of the reasons to co-concrete. I went over that quite, quite thoroughly. But everything from the outside, you, you don't want contaminants getting into the potable storage area where your water is stored, from the outside through cracks, holes. You don't want water leaking from the inside out, which all concrete tanks do leak. And you don't want, and as you can see on this picture, your, your tank is partially buried. So you've also got the possibility that you'll have ingress from the outside contaminants from the area that's buried below grade that you can't maintain. And you want to have a liner between the concrete surfaces in that case and the potable water on the inside. So I think I kind of beat that to death. So next, on to part two, which is the condition assessment. So do I still have some time?
Yes.
Make this quick, all right, great. So essentially, we did a condition assessment, the report is with Public Works, you have it if anybody wants to see it. And that afterwards, I have a copy here if anybody wants to look at it. Essentially, it goes into a lot of detail about it, but to, to break it down in short, the, the structure lacks the coatings, as I mentioned. The concrete structure, the substrate itself exhibits degradation in a lot of different forms, everything from cracking, exposed rebar, spalling, bug holes that all need to be addressed as far as restoring prior to installing a protective lining system. The appurtenances, as you'll see also in the photos coming up, the steel appurtenances also lack protective coatings. They've been corroding for some time now, and they need to be renovated as well. But we think we can save them. There's also some minor repairs and changes to the design to make the tank more efficient for operations and for maintenance going forward. So we'll cover those in the next 10 or 12 slides that I have coming up here. So anybody have any questions at this point before I go into the tank specifics? Great, thanks. Okay, on the exterior of the tank, this is the sidewall, and that's a gunite layer of concrete, which is essentially a layer of concrete designed to protect the layer of concrete below. It's just as porous, it's not doing the job it needs to. There's cracks, there's mildew. We need to seal the outside of it, and that'll give it a better aesthetic appearance. It's a nice side benefit of the coatings that we've been installing as well. Here's a photo of the area behind the, the architectural panels that you see on the left, where there's cracks up above there. We had evaluated whether or not it would make sense to just remove the panels, but we think we can restore them in a way that will be cost-effective and will not be as costly as removing everything and then trying to seal it and get it to look right. So idea would be to try to save that, and I think we can do that. On the roof of the tank, got spalling, we've got cracks as well. I'm not showing every picture, but just a few, it gives you some examples of what we see up there. Here's a photo of the solitary room, there's only one vent on the roof that serves many purposes, but you've got to have ventilation, a very corrosive environment, and you need it, obviously, so that you don't have a vacuum-related structural failure on the concrete as well. But you need to get more ventilation, so we're going to increase the ventilation. And we're going to do it in a way that kills two birds with one stone, so to speak. By putting, we need to have a second access area to that interior storage area. And what we'll do is when we cut that, rather than making one hole for the, for the new access, roof access, and another penetration for the vent, we'll make a penetration in the hatch door to allow it to vent through that, to keep costs down and be more efficient in that regard. We have some minor repairs we need to do to the hatch in this area, but as I mentioned, we're going to add a second access point to the interior, which we need for OSHA to be safe. Combined space there. Here's a photo at the top of one of the many concrete columns on the inside that show, you can see the rust streaking in this particular picture, it's not a real close-up shot, but the fact that you've got that much rust streaking with rebar that's supposedly buried two inches means that you've got a pathway that's getting to the steel, it's corroding. Another example of corrosion of rebar rod probably in this instance, working its way through a bug hole, and then a crack you see on the left with meth fluorescents visible. So you know, some of the calcium salts working their way from the inside of the concrete altitude to the surface area. Here's a picture of the steel inlet pipe. Why I chose this photo is actually it shows that you, you know.
You are a well-water system, so you do have sediments that collect at the bottom and need to be washed out regularly.
On our program, we wash out the tanks every two years. So we clean that sediment out, which is good for the water quality on the inside. If you look at the close-up, I had a picture of the, I guess I don't. Well, I had a picture of it, I guess it'll come up later, I've got another picture of the piping that shows the condition when you look at a closer. The coatings are no longer protecting the steel and any of the appurtenances of this, of this tank. This photo here shows biofilms on the upper areas of the sidewall. Needs to be removed by pressure washing on a regular basis. The biofilms basically, any microorganisms in the tank, they protect themselves with slime, and they try to adhere to anything so they can't be removed, that's how they preserve themselves. And on the sidewall, any, any place where they can attach, they're going to attach, you see it on the piping and, and on the sidewalls, columns as well. But it's just really gross, it, it's going to consume residual with chlorine, that's the practical aspect of it. And, and so you've got disinfection byproducts because of it, and it's, it's a threat to water quality. So you want to clean it. The whole idea, one of, one of the other benefits of installing a protective lining system, in addition to protecting your structure, you're going to have a smoother surface that's going to make it resistant to biofilms on the interior. So that's a big plus too for water quality. Here's a, here's a step back, zoom out, showing the, the support posts on the inside and the condition. You can see as, you know, on the walls of the, of the tank, towards the top, on the top half, you've got a lot more biofilm on those areas. And the areas on the underside of the ceiling where it's not getting act, help from the chlorine to help fight. So there's that aspect of it. On the whole though, however, the, the tank is in good enough condition to restore and will last for many years going forward. So it makes a lot more sense to renovate than to burn this thing out, run it to failure and try to buy a new tank. Fraction of the cost. This photo shows the basically intersection of the sidewall, which you see at the bottom, and, and the ceiling above it. You can see bug holes and spalling. This here, spalling at the, the joint where the ceiling meets the wall. Here's an exposed piece of rebar in the ceiling, you know, one of many, many pieces that are exposed. Here's some areas where you've got tubercles or tubercles, you know, word for it. Situation where the iron is corroding from the steel in the floor and worked its way out through a crevice or a channel, and it goes to the floor, and then it spreads there. Evidence that you've got ingress of water into the floor. Here's some meth fluorescents on the sidewall slabs. More evidence of water working its way out from the inside, perhaps even from the outside. Here's spalling on the sidewalls. You know, as I was mentioning earlier, the, the spalling is basically a byproduct of water that's found its way into the rebar. When the rebar corrodes, it, it expands and pushes the paste out, and then you've got a situation where you've got a larger hole, more ingress of water. I've seen a lot of tanks where they try to just patch this and then still not line the coating. And then you come back in three or four years and you see evidence that the spalls are worse. You can see evidence of where it was patched before, but now the, the area that's exposed is larger. Here's some bug holes on the precast walls. Typically, you would see those walls be smoother, but for whatever reason, it could be spalling as well. My gut feeling is these are bug holes from construction, but in either case, an inlet full of water finds its way into the substrate. Oh, here's that photo I was talking about earlier. This is the fill pipe, which you see from a distance here on the left. On the right is a close-up of that fill pipe, which I believe is 12 or 14-inch cast iron pipe. And you can see the coating's blistered, it's not protecting, you can see corrosion taking place in the pipe. So an advantage of our program is we take care of the coatings on all the surfaces, not just the concrete, but the steel as well. Here's some examples of the larger spalls on the floor. That's a shoe there, so that gives you an idea, these spalls are four, four to six inches in diameter. Here's a, this particular appurtenance is the inlet for the overflow pipe. At the very top of the high water line, all tanks, steel or concrete, have a, a mechanism so that the, the tank won't damage itself when it overflows. The water enters that overflow pipe, and the water is directed out of the tank where it can't damage through overfilling or other situations could arise from that. In, in short. In short, you can see here the coatings failed and, you know, the pipe itself is corroding. We need to renovate that. This was actually a stainless steel ladder and there's no stainless steel on it anymore. Need to renovate that as well, that's my point with that. Here's this picture of the sun pit. That's a very nice aspect of this tank. It does have a pit that you can use to pump out the water when you've got it diluted down to remove sediment. You can see the pile behind it is just, you know, an accumulation of a lot of the spalings that were on the wall. So that's, they made their way to that point, just to give you an idea how much actual, how much actual concrete you've lost on the wall. Here's an example of Schedule A from the agreement where we actually specified the items we're going to perform to restore the tank and install the lining. And here's a summary of the program again, in case anybody had any questions. I thought I put this at the end so that I could refer to aspects of the program. I guess I'll review it one quick time. It includes the upfront evaluation, which we've already done with this tank, the engineering and recommendations, includes the cost to renovate the tank and return it to a baseline condition, and then all the tasks associated with keeping the tank compliant. Washing out the tank regularly, inspecting the tank annually. We can do ROV inspections, that's like a Jacques Cousteau-style camera where we, if there's a situation where Brett says you can't drain the tank this year, we can actually install a camera in there and actually get a good idea of what the condition of the interior is from that. Includes water quality management tools like biofilm removal or mixing systems if you want those. All the engineering, maintenance and repairs on the front end as well as everything going forward are included as well. Emergency repairs are covered as well if you need them. We can be there in less than, usually we're there by noon. The whole idea with this type of program is to avoid emergencies, but in the event you have a problem like that, it's our problem. And because we're so close, we can get there by noon. Full coating renovations. The main issue with that is typically budgeting. And when you have a system such as ours where we flatten the budget, you don't have that big spike going forward. You've got it flattened so you can actually plan for it. So it makes things a lot better. I think Tommy would probably agree that budgeting is easier with this type of a program. So with that, I'll say thank you very much for your time. I know it's late and I appreciate your attention and you may have some questions, so open the floor for that.
I'll just start off by saying that bug holes have nothing to do with bugs. It's air pockets in the concrete from when they poured the tank that have wore through, so.
I leaned over and asked because the third time you used bug holes, I'm like, oh my God, this is gross.
She's not the first person to ask.
So I was like.
I won't say what it is.
My apologies for that term. Is there a better term for bug hole? Void is a good, that's an industry term, bug hole.
That's fine. No, I figured Brad or Tom would have said something if we had bugs.
We found no remains of bugs in the tanks. Be very clear about that.
Well, very comprehensive. Makes you wonder why we didn't coat it 25 years ago.
Because at the time when they sold it to the village, they said, this tank doesn't need maintenance and it's going to be cheaper. That steel tank you could buy and put on the ground, they're about the same, but you've got to pay a lot to coat it. And this concrete doesn't need maintenance. And I think that's kind of what happened. But as you saw in photos, it clearly does.
Yeah, clearly it's.
It's not rocket science, but the idea is if we can restore those and put a protective liner in there, we can keep that tank running for a long time.
I just wanted to point out that Suez was in in November 2017. We did drain the tank completely, which is the first time that's happened. Doing the dry inspection yielded a much more comprehensive report than we had had previously and it revealed a lot of these, you know, items that need maintenance. When they were in, they removed, I think, two to three, maybe four inches of sediment across the bottom. So the tank was completely pressure washed and cleaned and then sterilized afterwards. But we did get a much better picture for the condition of the tank with the dry inspection versus the dive inspections that we had done periodically previously.
No, I think it's very proactive, just like we did with the water towers to get on a program. I imagine the board probably wants to flatten it out.
So we do it with the water towers and it works out nice because like Bill said, I mean, you know what the number is and it's what it is. Plugging in the budget with the other tanks rolling off out of that three-year period, it provides some budget relief from that perspective, so.
Comments from the trustees?
You spoke about liners. Is that just a spray coating that you put on it? What is that?
Yes, it's a very, it's not a liner like you might buy for a pool liner. It's a liner that you fabricate to fill with epoxies and would you like to elaborate a little bit on the types of coatings that we use? Because that's John's specialty.
Yeah, in relation to concrete, typically what we'll do is we'll go in and we'll prep the surface, so we'll hydroblast it, we'll actually remove up to 16th, maybe even an eighth of the concrete to get the latency and all the dilatarius material off. Then we'll resurface it with an epoxy-sementitious mortar-type product where epoxy-sement bonds are really strong. So it's a lot stronger than the internal cohesive strength of concrete itself. So that'll fill the bug holes, we'll take care of all those anomalies with that. And then it's also, since it's got that epoxy resin matrix with the fibers in it, then we'll come over the top of it with a really dense, 100% solids, polymeric epoxy resin product of, I don't know, 60 mils or somewhere along those lines, substantially heavier and thicker than what you're going to find on steel. And then that entire system, it's surface prep, the resurfacing and the finished coating product that make the coating system up that then give the long-term protection for concrete.
Thank you.
And what is the length of time on that?
The length of time for the protection aspect, we especially expect to not see any issues for a couple decades, you know, 20 years, barring that we did, you know, things with concrete are unique, you know, the moisture content of that wall could be slightly different than that wall. No matter what we try to do, we're not going to be able to equalize those. So occasionally, we'll run into some anomalies. So that's the great thing about, you know, the program with us having 100% maintenance and warranty on all of that things. Any things that show up would be small and localized that could be easily repaired. But overall, you're going to get typically a longer service life than what you do or what you see for your steel tanks.
Trustee Karen Thorson.
I guess mine's kind of just an odd question. So the tank inspection report was done a year ago, November 2017?
Yes, so the inspection was done in November 2017. I think we received it in maybe January, February, the full comprehensive report of 2018. And then we got together to discuss possible options for maintenance and the concrete tank maintenance program was brought up, which is very similar to the elevated steel tank maintenance programs that we are currently involved with.
I just, I guess I was surprised that it takes about 11 months to come to us after the announcement.
Well, they have, the budget was already set and appropriated, so I assume you're gearing up for.
Correct, yes.
They kick off their budget process, staff will kick off their budget process in November and it kind of gets to us in February. So yeah, unless it was a catastrophic failure imminent, there's no money in this current year's budget for this.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I mean, the difference between, you know, waiting another year or so, like the mayor said, it's not going to make a huge difference. So just lining it up with those other tanks falling off, timing-wise, like I said, provide some budget relief on the utility fund.
Yeah, believe me, if there was catastrophic failure, Public Works would have been in front of us for emergency appropriation.
This is our potable drinking water supply, so you know, anytime there's any kind of catastrophic failure, we would act immediately.
It's a long budget cycle with the village. Mike?
Sure. Negative Nancy again, down at this end. Going back on that inspection report, I mean, let me just say, I think that, you know, you guys have a proven track record with the other water towers that this all makes sense to me and that's a great thing. But with the inspection, what'd you say, there was like six inches of sediment that was found in this thing? I mean, that, that like sort of raises an alarm for me. Like, is there a problem with finding the sediment and like what's contained in that sediment? Do we need to look at potential concerns with the water supply because of that?
You know, we test our water every month.
Sure, but I'm just, I know we test the water, but I mean, the sediment just.
Again, the tank was installed in 1992 and with any kind of drinking water that you get, there's going to be sediment built up in pipes and pumps and everything else. And not, it wasn't a six-inch or four-inch continuous layer because of the way that the water comes into the tank, it will disperse it around. Basically, it was just about 25 years' worth of sediment moving through the pipes, moving through the system that had accumulated in one spot because it's allowed to settle and because we had never washed out the tank previously. All of the elevated tanks, we do a washout every couple of years. We just finished doing the Pembroke Tower washout last week, so you don't see that kind of sediment in there. You do see some, but not to that extent. So this kind of contract moving forward would see much more frequent drain-down, washout cycles. But that kind of sediment would be expected in any municipality, even greater with municipalities that are solely well-water for that extended amount of time.
But these are natural occurring sediments rather than anything that, you know, anybody would need to have any concern about and something they would like find like natural minerals that are associated with the water, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I mean, I was concerned about.
They're from the well. Well, we're on lake water, but still, even with lake water, there's a certain amount of sand, sediment, you know, minerals contained in that water and they're going to settle out over time.
Right, okay. And I bring that up because we have people that listen to the tapes of these meetings and don't always understand what's going on and I think it's important to clear that up for them.
Sure, yeah. And like I think Pat said, or maybe the mayor said, you know, we test our water every single month, bacteriological samples, and we're in full compliance with all the IPA sampling requirements.
Yeah, I just don't want the wrong people to run with it and get the wrong idea. All right, so thank you.
How many test sites do we have, Brad?
We do 30 for the distribution and then we test each of our emergency backup wells every month.
So we do a lot of testing to make sure that water tastes good, potable, safe.
Oh, I know, and we're all on the same page. I just want the wrong people to get the wrong idea about what they may think this is out there.
We're blocked from that site anyway, so.
I'm not, I'm not.
Jeannie?
When you talked about part of the tank is surrounded by.
Below grade.
Below grade, yeah. Do you also check that and secure that in some way so that it doesn't suffer from the ground?
No, not unless there's some sort of a signal that, something that would indicate that there's a problem in that area. I've had tanks, a tank in DuPage County where when we did the washout and they isolated the tank, we couldn't get it completely dry and there was a portion of the tank where that water was flowing in from. Now, in that scenario, that made sense that we had to discuss alternatives, options for excavating that area to figure out what it is because there's obviously a problem there that we need to address. But in this scenario, the crew and the inspector, nobody saw anything that was indicative of a situation like that. And so part of what will be created with that liner is a barrier, both from the water to the concrete and then from other surfaces or other substances going back in. The thought is that that would address that. That's a downside of a buried tank is you don't, you can't maintain that, you can't really see it.
This is very informative. Good work, Brad and Tom. And you have done a very fine job with our water towers.
Thank you.
Makes good sense. Greg?
I just want to make comment, you guys have certainly expanded my vocabulary and I'll be trying some of these terms on my children. Terms such as efflorescence and.
Bug hole.
And epoxy-sementaceous. Very entertaining.
That's the best part of being an elected official is getting to learn all of these different things that, you know, are really interesting and fascinating.
They are. Thank you for those comments.
Good job.
So should we recommend, is there a consensus to flatten this out so the staff has a good direction for the budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, he'll see this in the proposed budget.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. All right, and that is everything for tonight. And a reminder, we moved the first meeting in November to the second Monday in November to avoid the election day-night setup. All right, so no meeting next Monday, it's the following Monday. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Trust Obama, second by Trusty Thorsonson. All in favor, say aye. All right.